I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, November 12, 2024 at 4:00 PM to order.
Lindsey, we may, we have roll call, please.
Benaja?
Present.
Bradkey?
Here.
Nemick?
Here.
Millet?
Here.
Carrick?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Bigick?
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united in its well with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes to the agenda? Yes, Jamie.
Um, so the last meeting, I know we are supposed to, at the next committee of the whole, we are going to fill Jamie Bedore's spot at the Building Authority. In prior, you know, prior to the previous meeting, there had been, I had heard something about they were having a hard time meeting Quorum. When I go back and look on the actual website, um, our Building Authority, that site hasn't been updated in quite some time. Jamie Bedore's name wasn't even on the list of people. And in fact, it appears as though Gary Phillips, he was supposed to be a vacancy that was supposed to be filled in 2021, and we didn't get the paperwork done for that. And that was when I was here the first time. So that's still open, I believe. And then there's a gentleman, John Fluger, who passed away last May, or May of, yeah, May of, no, May of 2023. And so I think that spot's supposed to be open. And then we have the spot that's coming up at the end of this month for Scott Brink that I know we're supposed to be filling in December.
December.
Um, I'm not sure how they've been able to have any meetings at all, as was, as I overheard. I would, I would make a motion that we, I know we're filling Jamie's spot, but I would make a motion that we at least post those vacancies. Uh, so there's three, two, but the one that we know we have to fill next week, and then make those appointments in December.
I, I think that we should wait till the new board is being put in next year because we're going to have new commissioners involved, and we would like to have their say on these appointments.
I completely understand that, but two of these happened, one when I was here the first time, and the other one in the, in the middle of this, this one's term. So we, we got two vacancies that we were responsible for filling, and it just, it seems like you wouldn't be living up to what your, what your requirements are supposed to be doing. And I feel bad because we missed it in 2021 when Gary didn't turn in his paperwork, and we were assured that was going to happen, and it just never did, and it fell asleep at the switch, I guess. It just didn't get done. But I mean, we've got two that were supposed to be filled by the people who were voted into these positions now, and one previous. Um, and then we've got the Brink one that's got to come up. So it, it makes sense to me that you, you were, you were voted to fill these three spots in this term, not next term. But I understand what your thought process is, but according to what we should be doing, this should have been taken care of.
Okay. But the one you were talking about will be appointed next week.
Correct.
That one, that one we approved.
Right.
In a committee, yes.
And that, and that spot, to, to be able to fill that seat, because that, that was, you know, someone's deceased, we're looking to fill that space. Um, you know, no one's going to fill his, his role, that's for certain. But I know, and we've got Mr. Brink who comes up, his expires this month, so we're appointing that one in December already. So that one was scheduled, that's on there. But these other two, one was supposed to happen in 2021, and then the other gentleman cast away, like I said, in May of 2023. So that, that should have been posted and filled a while ago. That probably should have been posted and filled when, when Mr. Player was, was here. So I, I just, it, it seems to me that those, those should probably be taken care of. We know we already have to post for Mr. Brink anyway. I would assume that we've already got a couple of people who have applied for Mr. Bedore's seat, so we already have at least two applicants for that one. So one of those people can easily fill into one of these other slots. But we've got three that we really should have appointed during this term, and, and one, well, yeah, one in the previous.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be my motion, that we make sure that we do what it is our due diligence was supposed to be. I know we've got a lengthy agenda, but this would just be a simple motion to add to the end to make sure that we're posting a point, so.
Yeah, the, the Building Authority, Bob was in charge, and they, they had not met for about a year or two. So we, we called them up, and it, and it was required that they meet yearly, and they had not met yearly. So they had not had any meetings for a couple of years. So we finally got the hold of the chair, and they kind of got a meeting together finally. So it really was that they were not meeting, not having regular scheduled meetings, as we're supposed to be doing. So we can take a look at it, yeah, we can discuss that at the, at the end with your vote.
I'll support your motion, just because, because you made one.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, under the discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none. Motion carries, we'll put it back till the end of the meeting, we'll discuss it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I need approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. I need a motion for the minutes of nine, 10, and 10-1.
I'll move it.
Standing to adjourn, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. At this time, this is public input. Is there anyone wishing to address this committee? Please come forward. Going once, going twice. Public input is closed at this time. Petitions and communications, this is a public hearing regarding a proposed 2025 Bay County budget. I need a motion.
Motion to go out of regular order business, conduct a public hearing, following a public hearing, motion to go back to regular order with this.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. At this time, this is for public input on our proposed 2025 Bay County budget. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to address this and have any discussions or questions regarding our budget? This is the time. Going once, going twice. Public input on the 2025 budget hearing is closed.
Make that motion. Need a motion.
Motion.
Motion to go back to regular order of business.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Now, and to be, Board of Commissioners, 2025 Bay County budget.
We want to most refer the 2025 budget to the full board for adoption today, in May, or November 19th.
Good question.
Wait, don't you have to open it up for discussion?
So is this, is this a, if we refer it, I guess, I, maybe I don't understand everything. I haven't been here very long. But is there, that deal with any changes, or just the way it's written, or what are we talking about?
If there's anything in there that you wish to look at, to have discussion on?
No, it's a change.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to look at, on page seven, number 15, uh, you know, I don't know why, you know, so, are you trying, are we trying to give the Board of Commissioners a raise, is my question? Because we crossed out exclusive, it's always been there, you know, for, for I don't know how many years. And I don't know if this is the right time. You got, you know, we're all going to be gone, I don't know if we should be doing that now, is my question.
Well, I would like to have Colleen, she was on the committee, could you explain?
So where there was discussion on Finance Committee, that the board has not had an increase in pay, and I, excuse me, I think it's been 20 years, and we decided to go with the, um, 3% yearly, that the whole union contracts and everything would go across the board. So, um, with the United Steelworkers increase. So it's only 3%.
Like $300?
That is, a year.
A year.
It's not like they're giving $30,000 or anything like that.
I understand, that's my question.
Okay. So that was the only change.
Okay.
They'll still have their health benefits and stipend if they don't take the health benefits.
Right.
That's all.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. C Equalization Director, revised appropriations report, Bay County Pool Millage and County Mosquito Control Millage.
I'll move to receive that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The revised AL 4029, Bay County Pool Millage and County Mosquito Control Millage.
Move to receive that.
Support.
During discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Bay County Sheriff, the JAG application for the year 2024, 2025.
I'll move that.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Road Patrol Township Contracts for the year 2025.
I'll move it. Support.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The lateral transfer recommendation for a Road Patrol deputy.
So move. Support.
During discussion on this one? Yes, Jamie?
I know I spoke to Sheriff Cunningham, and he explained it pretty much as well as I understood it, knowing kind of where we come from, and it's hard to find people right now. It's difficult to find teacher people, which is what I do.
It's true.
Um, and if you can find a situation where you might be able to get someone to move from somewhere else, it's not really appealing if you're bringing them in at a lower rate and a lower wage, just because that's where the expectation is there. So I wondered if he wanted, if this happened to be here, if he wanted to just have, explain this a little bit, so.
Right, it's, it's, and the lateral transfers is just basically, if somebody's been working at another agency and has five, six, 10 years in, um, they would come to Bay County and fill up vacancy that we have, and then we would just start them at a higher rate of pay when they come in. That's it.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Reorganization of Bay County Community Corrections to Bay County Courts.
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Bay County Chief Deputy Register of Deeds, United Way of Bay County, spark hope for the holidays program.
So.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor? Yes, yes, Jamie.
I just want to go on, if the, the Register of Deeds is actually going to be doing a baking for this.
Baking. If he was here, yes.
If, if he is, I want to make sure that he denotes which things he baked, because check that out. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Remontmentation Administrator for 2025 Remontmentation Program.
So move.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Emergency Management Coordinator, Emergency Management Performance Grant for Agreement for the year 2024.
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Court Administrator, Appointment of Attorney Magistrate.
I'll move it. Support.
Is there any comments and questions on this one? Kim's here, go on.
Do you want to have anything to say about?
Yeah, Kim.
Looks like a busy job. I don't know if you could sort of outline some of the duties. Looks like there's a lot of duties involved with this position.
Um, so, so the order that you see is the draft language from the Supreme Court, and the court can appoint any or all of those functions to be done by the magistrate. We have chosen to pick every one of them that are available. The normal functions of the magistrate and district court, they perform weddings, they do landlord-tenant, they do all the small claims, they do most of the traffic. Um, so they're not allowed, they can, they're also on call with the judges, but they're not allowed to perform every function that a judge can, so certain things have to go to a judge. The other thing would be if I had a hearing before the magistrate, I could appeal it to the judge if I didn't like their decision. But having a magistrate makes the function really move along a lot faster. They handle most of the walk-in arraignments every day. So, but that is just the list of things that can be had for a function like, you know, handling snowmobile tickets and boating tickets and DNR and whatnot.
I've got a question about his, where has he been before, Mr. Perry? What, what position has he held?
He currently is a referee in Saginaw County in their Pro Bay Juvenile Division. Um, he's practiced in Bay County as an attorney prior to that.
Okay.
So.
Yes, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, I don't know, Mr. Perry, but I'm sure that adequate vetting has occurred on him, and you think he'd be a good choice. I just wanted to say that Jan Donner has been a magnificent magistrate, and we're going to miss her. I don't know Mr. Perry, but I know how magistrate Donner functioned since she filled that post, and she's been an exemplary public servant. So we're going to miss her. On the other hand, hopefully we'll be working with Mr. Perry to kind of handle those minor legal issues that come before the magistrate.
Yes, you're correct. Magistrate Donner has done a fantastic job and is a wonderful person, and we wish her well, as she's retiring next month. There were eight resumes received for the position. The judges selected three of them to interview, which we did, and they chose Mr. Perry.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Kim.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The 2024, 2025 Grant Awards.
So.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Director of Department of Aging, premium pay for direct care workers funding for the 2025.
I'll move it.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Region Seven Purchase of Service Agreement for 2024, 2025.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Health Officer, Agreement with My Sidewalk Incorporated for Community Health Assessment.
So.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Paranatal Care System Quality Improvement Initiative Grant for 2025 year.
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Access Technology Services Agreement.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion on? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Agreements with Nurse Practitioners and Physician Assistance for 2025.
So.
Support.
Discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Mortgage Agreement with McLaren Bay Region for the 2024, 2026 year.
I'll move it.
Support.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Personnel Director, Brown and Brown Agreement.
So move.
Is there any discussion on this?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The 85-15 Split for Healthcare for the 2025.
So.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Weight Management Solutions Agreement.
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Virtual Muscle and Joint Health Program Agreement.
So.
Support.
Any discussion? Yes, Ron.
Sad question, is maybe, what for a Swiss Health Department, maybe?
You can have.
Is it a, is this a new program?
Personnel Director.
Tiffany Vaughn.
Tiffany.
Oh, Tiffany. Oh. Hi. You know who they ask, new program, uh?
It is a new program being offered through Blue Cross Blue Shield to try to mitigate some of those increasing costs.
Nope, no cost?
No, there's no cost just to provide the program, users of the program, they would be, we would pay for per month cost, but they would be paying for that in an in-person visit anyways.
Okay.
And we're hoping for some results that will save us some money.
Yeah, so they ran some claims from the previous year, and had we had that program in place, they estimate we would have saved about $99,000. So we're hopeful that that would move forward annually.
Might be signing up. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Delta Dental Contract for the 2025 year.
I'll move it. Support.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. EHIM Vaccination Amendment.
I'll move it.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Blue Cross Blue Shield, BCBS Schedule A for 2025.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this one? This one?
Just about the cost, what, how much increase, I think it was what, 15, 14? Not too much?
16 and a half percent for the stop-loss premium. We anticipate that will be larger in the coming years because of the amount of utilization that we have for that.
Always goes up, though.
It does.
Never down. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. And the Tuition Reimbursement for Tegan Gogochak. Gogochak.
Mustard seed.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. The Finance, the Analysis of General Fund Equity for 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. And the Updated Regarding Executive Directive 2007-11.
Move to receive.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. And the Purchasing RFP, Bit Award for Bay County Mosquito Control.
I'll move it.
[laughing].
Support.
Support.
I was just finishing it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. And the Payables to General, everybody's got those attached.
Mm-hmm. Support.
The Office of the Assigned Counsel, August 2024 Report, yes.
Did you move that? I'm not sure.
Yes.
Yeah, they supported it. Did you support some? Moved it.
She did.
Oh, she moved it and supported it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, August 2024 Report.
Move to receive.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. And September 2024 Report.
I'll move to receive.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, see none, motion carries. Any referrals?
The motion from.
Oh, yes. Motion until we do it.
Yeah, motion to post our three vacancies in November and to fill in November at the Building Authority.
Fill November or fill December?
Uh, well, we posted in November, then fill in December. So you had people, an opportunity to be able to apply, and we had people that are applying for the month past that we, that we said we were going to fill in November.
I just didn't know if I misheard you when you said November.
No, no, I, yeah, that would be really fast. But yeah, if we could, so the motion is to post the vacancies from Gary Phillips and John Fluger, and the one that was expected, Scott Brink, and then to fill in December. Yeah.
Okay.
Support. Again.
Okay.
Is there any discussion?
I don't see any. I don't think there's any reason to wait. I mean, it's, no. Like you said, due to jealousness.
Yeah.
And one of them was.
Yeah.
It was before, so that should have been done. And then, of course, John passed away, so.
Right, I agree.
Yes, as I mentioned, they weren't active, DN actually was heading up, was doing most of the work for that committee, and then Bob was, was the chair of the committee, and then he left, and then nothing really happened for a long period of time. And then we told them they needed, it's supposed to be a yearly meeting, which they were not having, we got a hold of the chair, and they did have a meeting finally, so, well. We haven't used the Building Authority. Uh, I don't know, maybe Amber can explain, or somebody can explain what we, what we would use them for, or Jim, maybe.
Yeah.
Yes, Jim, go ahead.
If I could first, it would be great to start filling those positions, because with the passage of the Community Center Pool, that project will have to be bonded out. So all bonded projects will have to go through the Bay County Building Authority.
No, I don't think so.
No, the Building, the Building Authority has the authority to issue bonds without voter approval, and the county can enter into contracts with the Building Authority. I think that the Building Authority did that with, if my understanding is correct, I could be wrong, the Civic Arena, I believe the jail, and I believe the, the prior court facility. But the Building Authority, it, it still meets because it has to approve payments on particular bonds that have been taken out, and they still need to have a meeting this year before the end of the year to approve a payment that the Finance Department was waiting on. So even though they don't have any active building projects at this particular point in time, they still have business that needs to be taken care of. One of the things that they're also meeting on, and we met earlier this year, was the transfer of some of the properties from the Building Authority to the county after the bond debt was paid off. Those properties were supposed to be transferred over into Bay County proper, and that transfer was never done, so they're still held in the name of the Building Authority. And so those were some of the things that needed to be corrected. So if does, if there's any time that there are active bond payments that are still being made to pay off an outstanding debt, it's technically the Building Authority, if the Building Authority is the one who took out the bond, it is the Building Authority that has to vote to approve the payment.
And, and Mr. Chair, the last project was the Bay County Civic Arena in 1998, and the bonds were completely paid off in 2018. So that's why it's been fairly inactive, but thanks for that great clarification, Amber. Typically, a project of that size in the past has had involvement from Bay County Building Authority.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim.[1538.97]